Counselor Baker.
Yeah.
Counselor Campbell.
Here.
Counselor Siomo. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Sabby George. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn.
Yeah.
Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Presley.
Present.
Counselor Wu.
Present.
And Counselor Zakeham.
Here.
Madam President, all in attendance.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I'm informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I would like to invite up Counselor Flaherty, who will bring up the clergy for the day. Would all guests and counselors please rise? At this time, Counselor Flaherty along with Pastor Kevin Scott will lead us in the invocation. I ask that guests remain and colleagues remain standing as they take us through the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the privilege of introducing an East Boston resident that's Pastor Kevin Scott. He is the planter and the lead pastor of the church at The Well. It's a Bible-teaching church in East Boston. He's also the founder and president of The Well Coffee House, which is a nonprofit coffee house. First started, actually, a lot of folks may remember, was at Salt Station, which also supports other local nonprofits who are doing good things in the city. Pastor Kevin is married to his wife Kristi, has three children, Tanner, Lacey, and Anna Maria. And before entering the full-time ministry, Kevin and Kristi had owned and operated two successful businesses back in California. We have them now here in East Boston. I assume he's a Red Sox fan. I assume he's a Celtics fan. I assume he's a Bruins fan, but he can speak for himself. But he has served as pastor since 2005, and prior to that, worked at a camp for inner-city kids in upstate New York. He holds two master's degrees and also a BS in biology. So, a great warm welcome to the Boston City Council for Pastor Kevin Scott to deliver today's invocation.
Thank you very much. As I was thinking this morning about what I wanted to share with you, I kind of take these moments in the morning where I just kind of go off to myself, find a quiet space, and just think through the day. And I was overwhelmed with my own deficiencies as a servant leader. And my hunch is that as fellow servant leaders of this community, you have those moments when you feel overwhelmed as well. Those moments when you realize that the decisions that you make not only impact you and your families, but also everyone else in the city, and especially your constituents. As servant leaders, we are expected to live lives that not only example in word, but also in deed. And that pressure can become overwhelming at times. And as we think through our own deficiencies, we realize, man, it's, this is tough. It's hard to hold that standard that we set for ourselves all the time. But I was encouraged today, as I opened up the scriptures and read from who the scriptures call "the wisest man that's ever lived," King Solomon. I'm in Proverbs, Chapter 3. He says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart; lean not on your own understanding; in all your ways acknowledge him, and he will set your paths straight." And so, as I pondered that today, I thought, man, even in my own deficiencies, as long as I'm focusing on Him, as long as I put Him first, as long as I'm seeking after Him, then He promises that our paths will be straight, that our deficiencies will be overcome by what He chooses to do through us. That same individual in scripture, King Solomon, once again, who was considered the wisest, also said that those who desire wisdom can humbly come to the Lord and ask for it at any time. And so, what I wanted to do this morning is just pray over you, and pray that the Lord would grant us that wisdom to encourage us that even though in our deficiencies might be present, they can be overcome if we'll trust in Him. So, if you'd pray with me, I'd appreciate that. Father, we just thank You for Your Word. We thank You for the opportunity to be here. We thank You for the privilege of being servant leaders in this community. Lord, we are often confronted with our own deficiencies. But, Lord, we're grateful that You provide wisdom to those who seek it. So, Father, I just lift up each individual in this room who humbly has taken the role of servant leader in this community. Lord, I pray that You would bless them, that You would bless their families. Lord, that You would give them the wisdom that they need to make the decisions that impact so many people. Lord, I pray for unity in this room. I ask, Lord, that You would be glorified in all that we do. Lord, would You guide us? Would You give us the wisdom that we need to make the decisions that You desire? And, Lord, we pray this all in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
I can lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Counselor Flaherty has a special presentation.
So, I have a very special guest today, folks. And it's Mr. Joseph, Jean Saint-Flore Joseph. And we met last year, and I had just missed his birthday last year, and I said, you know what? I said, let's plan an event for your next birthday. And the next birthday being his 107th birthday. 107th birthday, so. And I just thought that was so fabulous. I actually, I met him when he was 106. I said, where have you been all these years? But just a little bit with respect to supporting and uplifting elderly community, that we all know that that should take a priority in our city. And having met Mr. Joseph at an elderly event last year, and he inspired me to continue to double down and refocus efforts on the elderly community and particularly our veterans. He had served in the Haitian Army from 1950 to 1956. And after serving in the Haitian Army, he became a public servant in Haiti. And he came to the United States on October the 8th of 1988. And he's now currently, was it?
Perfect.
Perfect, yes. And he's now celebrating his 107th birthday. He was turning 107 on April the 5th. And so, put this in perspective, okay? So, Mr. Joseph was born when William Taft was the President of the United States. He's lived through two world wars and one Great Depression. Before, he was born before New Mexico, Arizona, Alaska, and Hawaii were admitted to the United States, and lived through 19 U.S. presidential administrations. So, I think Mr. Joseph is clearly doing something right as one of our city's oldest residents, if not the oldest. And we wanted to take this opportunity to give him an official City Council proclamation, reaffirming our commitment to our seniors and to his exceptional longevity and resilience, and wishing him the very best and much future success, and a pledge to hopefully have him back here next year for his 108th birthday. So, with God's will, all right? And Mr. Joseph, just, Mr. Joseph, just a piece of advice, please don't run against any one of us, all right? We'll have some problems. But if my colleagues can come up and gather around Mr. Joseph, he actually wants to say, he's going to say a few words, so.
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Happy birthday, sir.
You're a wonderful person. Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Everybody in?
Okay.
Happy birthday, Mr. Joseph.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. How you saying for you?
Oh, yeah. You can sing in English, too. Happy birthday to you. Okay. Can you sing now?
Thank you.
Of course. My dear. I'm so glad you're here. I'm not even going to go. You just have to go sit there. Just have to sit there. Happy birthday.
Jean. Same for you, Joseph. J-E-A-N. Same for you.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday. Happy birthday. Happy birthday. I'm good. I'm very good. I'm very good. So, he's American citizen a long time ago. I'm here. This is my father. I'm American citizen, too.
Remember what's your name?
I'll be writing my name for you. Of course. Who's in 12? Who's in 12? Perfect. Perfect. Oh, for Charles Joseph.
Ronald Houghton with the citizenship.
Oh, the lady, yeah, she's the manager. Maureen. 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 Maureen.
So, want to take this opportunity to thank Maureen, his building manager, for bringing him in. Good to see you, Maureen.
I saw a apartment.
And obviously, his son, Lafran Joseph, as well.
Charles Joseph.
Welcome to the City Council, and thank you for bringing Mr. Joseph in. All right? Good. Awesome.
Awesome. All right. Yes, yes, yes.
Want to take this opportunity to thank Maureen, his building manager, for bringing him in. Good to see you, Maureen.
I saw a apartment.
And obviously, his son, Lafran Joseph, as well.
Charles Joseph.
Welcome to the City Council, and thank you for bringing Mr. Joseph in. All right? Good. Awesome.
Awesome. All right. Yes, yes, yes.
Want to get in, Maureen?
No, I don't know what's going on.
Just jump in, Maureen. We'll get it to you. Come on, get in. Jump in, Maureen. Get in. Come on.
Come over here.
Come over here.
Please.
Please.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Oh, so excited. Yes, 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 yes.
God bless you. We need to see you back here next year, okay?
Okay, absolutely.
We're going to pray for you.
Absolutely.
Because you remind us of how important it is to live a good life.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, sure. Yeah, I'm going to pray for you.
That's right, I am.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, we can come on.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate this moment together with you. I feel very happy. I feel very, how can I say? Comfortable, because for me, it's a great moment for me to be together with you to share my father's birthday. So, he feel very happy, too. So, I hope next time, you will do the same thing for him.
That's right.
Because God bless him a lot.
That's right.
God is his shepherd. He shall not be in one.
Amen.
Everything that he needs, he will get it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Counselor Flaherty. And Mr. Joseph, thank you so much, and happy 107th birthday to you. Moments like that make us all pause and reflect and remind us how grateful we are to have incredible residents. So, thank you again, Counselor Flaherty. At this time, moving on to approval of the minutes. There are no corrections to be made. The minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes of the last meeting are so approved. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Madam President, I'll read docket 0559 through 0565.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 0559, message and order for the annual appropriation and tax order for the FY 2019 filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 9th, 2018. Docket number 0560, message and order for the annual appropriation of the school department for the FY 2019, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 9th, 2018. Docket number 0561, message and order approving an appropriation of $40 million to the other post-employment benefits known as OPEB Liability Trust Fund, established under Section 20 of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20, as added by Chapter 479 of the Acts of 2008, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 9th, 2018. Docket number 0562, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to appropriate an amount of $53,802,817 for the city's capital grant fund in order to provide funding for various transportation and public realm improvements. These projects are aligned with the goals of the Go Boston 2030, the city's transportation master plan. The fund shall be credited to the capital grant fund from the parking meter fund, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 9th, 2018. Docket number 0563, message and order approving an appropriation of $1,600,000 from the surplus disposition fund, credited to the capital fund for the development of the master plans, architectural, engineering plans, and designs for the implementation of such plans and designs for Boston Common, Franklin Park, and the completion of the Emerald Necklace, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 9th, 2018. Docket number 0564, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to enter into one or more lease, lease purchase, or installation sale agreements in fiscal year 2019 in an amount of $31,700,000. These funds are to be used by various city departments for the acquisition of equipment in furtherance of their respective governmental functions. The list of equipment includes computer equipment, hardware and software, motor vehicles and trailers, ambulances, firefighting equipment, office equipment, telecommunication equipment, photocopying equipment, medical equipment, school and educational equipment, school buses, parking meters, streetlight installations, traffic signal equipment, and equipment functionally related to and components of the foregoing, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 9th, 2018. Docket number 0565, message and order approving an appropriation of $291,330,000 for the acquisition of interests in lands or the acquisition of assets or the landscaping, alteration, mediation, rehabilitation, of improvement of public land, the construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, improvement, alterations, remodeling, enlargement, demolition, removal, or extraordinary repairs to public buildings, facilities, assets, works or infrastructure for the costs of feasibility studies or engineering or architectural services for plans and specifications for the development, design, purchase, and installation of computer hardware or software and computers, assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems for any other public work, improvement, or asset with a maximum useful life of at least five years and not otherwise specified, for planting shade trees for the purpose of various city departments, including the Boston Center for Youth and Families, Department of Innovation and Technology, Environment, Fire Inspection Services Department, Neighborhood Development, Office of Arts and Culture, Parks and Recreation, Police, Property Management, Public Works, Transportation, Boston Public Library, Boston Public Schools, Boston Redevelopment Authority, and the Public Health Commission, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 9th, 2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, dockets, just for the public, dockets 0559 and through 0565 contain the FY 19 fiscal budget, operating budget, as well as capital budget, submitted to the council to review over the next few months. And so, dockets 0559 through 0565 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, if you could read docket 0566 and 0567.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0566, message and order to amend the City of Boston code ordinance, Chapter 6, Section 6-6.3, and the schedule of parking fines, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 9th, 2018. And docket number 0567, message and order to amend the City of Boston code ordinance of Chapter 6, Section 9.5, the Solar Renewable Energy Certificates Revolving Fund, filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 9th, 2018.
Docket 0566 and 0567 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, if you could read docket 0568 through docket 0586.
84.
84. That's right. Yes, thank you.
Docket number 0568, message and order authorizing the Law Department Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2019 to purchase goods and services for repairs to city property. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from recoveries for damages to the city property caused by third parties. The Law Department will be the only unit authorized to expend. The funds and such expenditures shall be capped at $500,000. Docket number 0569, message and order authorizing the limit for the Distributed Energy Resource Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2019 to facilitate the purchase offsets of greenhouse gas emissions, which shall be associated with a portion of the electricity consumed by the city annually, and to operate, maintain, monitor, and expand the city's existing solar arrays and Boston Public Schools' combined heat and power facilities. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from the sales, sale of renewable and alternative energy certificates and all receipts from the sales, I'm sorry, and demand response program revenues produced by combined heat and power units located at the Boston Public Schools sites and solar renewable energy certificates produced by the city's photovoltaic arrays. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $250,000. Docket number 0570, message and order authorizing a limit for the mayor's Office of Tourism Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2019 to purchase goods and services to support events and programming on and around City Hall Plaza, to advance tourism and to promote participation in public celebrations, civic and cultural events. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from payments for the use of City Hall Plaza pursuant to the City of Boston's code ordinance 11-7.14. The mayor's Office of Tourism will be the only unit authorized to expend from this fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000. Docket number 0571, message and order authorizing, excuse me, a limit for the mayor's Office of Arts and Culture Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2019 revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to purchase goods and services to support public art, to enhance the public realm throughout the city of Boston. This revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from easements within the public way granted by the Public Improvements Commission. The mayor's Office of Arts and Culture will be the only, only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000. Docket number 0572, message in order authorizing a limit for the mayor's Office of Arts and Culture revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to purchase goods and services to support the operation of the Strand Theater. The revolving fund shall be funded by receipts from rental fees for the use of the Strand Theater. The mayor's Office of Arts and Culture will be the only unit authorized to expend from this fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $150,000. Docket number 0573, message in order authorizing a limit of the Boston Public Schools' revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to support the maintenance and repairs for BPS facilities, including custodial and utility costs for extended building time, floor refinishing, landscaping, and building repairs. Receipts from lease, permit, and use and parking fees for BPS facilities will be deposited in the fund. BPS will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall not exceed $2,600,000. Docket number 0574, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools' revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to repair and purchase Boston Public Schools' computer technology, including computers, mobile devices, and instructional services. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from equipment sales and repair fees for the Boston Public Schools' technology. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $1,500,000. Docket number 0575, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools' revolving fund for the fiscal year 2019 for Boston Public Schools' transportation costs, including bus and public transportation costs. This revolving fund shall be credited with revenue received by Boston Public Schools Department for the provision of transportation to groups and entities for field trips and activities other than transportation to and from school. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $125,000. Docket number 0576, message in order authorizing a limit for the Inspection Services Department revolving fund for the fiscal year 2019 to reimburse for administrative costs to those city agencies which enforce CBC Chapter 16, Section 1.9 and 1.9b, and for costs associated with licensing and registration. This revolving fund shall be credited with receipts from all dog registration fees collected pursuant to CBC Chapter 18, Section 1.4, 6 to 10, and fines pursuant to CBC Chapter 16, Section 1.9 and 1.9b. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $300,000. Docket number 0577, message in order authorizing a limit of the Boston Center for Youth and Families BCYF revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to pay salaries and benefits of employees to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate the City Hall childcare. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from tuition paid by parents or guardians for children enrolled at the center. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $750,000. Docket number 0578, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to support training programs for offices for non-City of Boston law enforcement agencies. The academy will charge participating outside law enforcement agencies tuition for each recruit, police officers, or special police officers they send to the academy. The tuition paid by the outside agencies will be used to purchase training equipment, certified instructors, update facilities, and to provide funds for training, excuse me, for training needs not otherwise budgeted. The police academy will be the only unit authorized to expend from the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $100,000. Docket number 0579, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to support the K-9 units' training program for offices and police dogs from non-City of Boston law enforcement agencies. The Special Operating Division will charge tuition and other fees to outside law enforcement agencies for the K-9 unit. The tuition and other fees for outside agencies will be used to purchase training equipment, certify instructors, update facilities, and provide funds for other training needs not otherwise budgeted. The Special Operations Division will be the only unit authorized to expend from this fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $75,000. Docket number 0580, message in order authorizing a limit from the Boston Police Department revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 for the purpose of purchasing, leasing, or renting space, materials, and equipment to be partially or wholly used for instructional purposes for new Hackney Carriage Driver applications, and providing funds for other training needs not otherwise budgeted. Receipts and results, resulting expenditures from this fund will not exceed $100,000. Docket number 0581, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to pay salaries and benefits of the employees and to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate the Police Department's Fitness Center. Revenue for this fund is derived from monthly membership fees. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $250,000. Docket number 0582, message in order authorizing the appropriation of $1,200,000 from the income of the George Francis Parkman Fund. The funds are to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation for the maintenance and improvements of the Boston Common and parks in existence since January 12, 1887. Docket number 0583, message in order for an appropriation in the amount of $759,663 for the administrative operating expenses of the City of Boston Preservation Committee, known as CPC, for fiscal year 2019, and a future appropriation order in the amount of $21,20262 from the Community Preservations Fund, known as the FUND. Estimate annual revenue for fiscal year 2019 to be appropriated and reserved for future appropriations. And docket number 0584, message in order for an appropriation order in the amount of $4,400,000 from the 21st Century Fund, also known as the Public Educational or Grant PEG Access Cable Related Fund, pursuant to Section 53F and 3/4 of Chapter 44 of the General Laws to the PEG Access and Cable Related Grant for cable-related purposes consistent with the franchise agreement between the cable operator and the city, including but not limited to supporting public, educational, or governmental access cable television services, monitoring compliance of cable operator with the franchise agreement, or preparation for renewal of the franchise license.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Docket 0568 through 0584, which also include sections from the FY19 budget, will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0585, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $569,031.84 in the form of a grant for the State Elder Lunch Program awarded by Mass. Executive Office of Elder Affairs to be administered by the Elderly Commission. The grant will fund meals for seniors in Boston.
Counsel Pressley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to suspend the rules and accept this grant. This grant supports social ombudsman, health prevention, caregiver, and nutrition services to Boston seniors. This is essentially the same bulk of money that we suspended and passed earlier in this council meeting. This portion of the grant money, however, will support the NSIP program, which stands for Nutrition Services Incentive Program, and our State Elder Lunch Program, which serves about 470,000 meals to about 1,200 elders in Boston. And this program not only delivers meals to our homebound seniors, but also hosts group meals at over 45 meal sites around Boston. This program includes regular wellness checks and assessment for our seniors while also providing nutrition and community.
Thank you, Counsel Pressley. At this time, Counsel Pressley, who is the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0585. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0585 has been passed.
Docket number 0586, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $150,000 in the form of a grant for childhood obesity prevention awarded by the United States Conference of Mayors to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Food Access. The grant will fund BOSS Food Love, a partnership between the Boston Public Schools and Nutrition Services and the Mayor's Office of Food Access. The partnership will work to ensure children at selected schools receive healthy and delicious meals to fuel their performance and success.
Counsel Pressley of the floor.
Ostensibly the same talking points, although a different constituency. I move to accept this grant and to suspend and pass.
Thank you, Counsel Pressley. At this time, Counsel Pressley, who is the Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0586. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0586 has been passed. Reports of public officers and others.
Madam President, would you like me to read 0587 through 0589?
Yes, thank you.
Docket number 0587, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of March 7, 2018. Docket number 0588, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of March 21, 2018. Docket number 0589, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its March 28, 2018, meeting.
Docket 0587 through 0589 will be placed on file. Reports of committees.
Docket number 0166, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on January 24, 2018. Docket number 0166, an ordinance increasing access to voter registration submits a report recommending the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This ordinance was proposed by our colleague, City Council Justice Sakim, and it seeks to amend the City of Boston code ordinances, Chapter 11, by adding a new section on voter registration accessibility in order to increase access to voter registration in Boston. So to elaborate, for anyone who has the right to vote, the language in this ordinance will require Boston Public Library branches to make voter registration forms available in visible locations, require the Boston Public Schools to provide voter registration forms to parents and legal guardians, as well as pre-registration forms for eligible students. Further, this proposal will allow Boston Public School students to start school a little late on Election Day. Can't stroll in at 11:00, but will work with you in the morning, provided that they took time out of their schedule to vote and have proof that they voted. Require the Transportation Department to provide voter registration forms to residents who are seeking resident parking permits or updating their resident parking permit applications. And also, through the hearing suggested by one of our colleagues, I believe it might have been Counselor Janey, had recommended the use of our community centers, which, as you know, are sort of a lifeline of a lot of our neighborhoods and community groups. So we've included that provision as well, that voter registration forms will be made available at the Boston Centers for Youth and Family, all community centers. So lots of good stuff happened at the hearing that was held on March 26. Following individuals came on behalf of the Election Department, Dion Irish, Monica Roberts from the BPS, Anna Fahey Flynn from BPL, Patricia Foley from BPL, Steve McGuire from BTD, and I believe our clerk also, did it? Was our clerk here as well? Is that our clerk was here? No. So they had described that they felt that they were doing some of these efforts, but prodding by the city council on the aforementioned changes, that they were in agreement. Additionally, the committee discussed opportunities raised by our colleague and veteran Counselor Eddie Flynn, making it easier for those that are deployed in the armed forces. He described situations where he was overseas, and sometimes he would either not get the ballot, or he'd get the ballot well after the election results were recorded. So he currently is working with the Election Department to bring about some of those changes and getting some additional resources. So with respect to all of the above, the Chair at this time would be recommending passage in a new draft, but through the Chair would like to give the lead sponsor an opportunity to share with his thoughts, given his hard work and effort and collaboration with all of our colleagues with their suggested changes is why we're passing in a new draft. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Sakim, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty, for your work on this. I want to thank all of our colleagues who attended the hearing, participated, particularly as Counsel Flaherty already said, Counsel Flynn, for sharing his experiences when he was on active duty in the Navy and the difficulties in receiving absentee ballots, and Counsel Janey's comments, which resulted in what we're calling the Janey Amendment here, including the BCYF centers in this. This is pretty straightforward. Counsel Flaherty did a great job of explaining what we're trying to do here. There are so many opportunities for people who have their regular interactions with city government, whether it's with BTD, with the libraries, at our schools, and just providing this information, providing voter registration forms in a proactive manner, while we work on passing a statewide automatic voter registration law up at the State House that would really address these issues and automatically enroll people. I think this is the best step cities and towns can take to encourage participation. I am particularly proud of the aspect of this about preregistering our public school students and making sure they have an opportunity to participate. For those of you that were able to see our hearing we had last summer, we heard from a member of the Boston Student Advisory Council who was really disappointed, from him and his friends, that they couldn't have time to vote on Election Day, whether it was because they had jobs after school, extracurricular activities, or obviously, given our citywide high schools, it might not be that easy to make sure you get to school in time and then get back in time to cast your ballot. So I'm very excited about this. I want to thank all my colleagues for their input. I want to especially thank Mayor Walsh and his administration for coming to the table and working very collaboratively and proactively in offering constructive advice on some of the changes that we did have to make, but I look forward to implementing this, and I'm really excited to see what steps we can take forward to improving registration numbers and ultimately turnout. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Sakim. At this time, Counsel Flaherty, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0166 in a new draft. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0166 has been passed in a new draft. Matters recently heard for possible action?
Docket number 0174, ordinance regarding the right of free petition.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is docket 0174, sponsored by our colleague, City Council Michelle Wu. We have the hearing on Monday, April 9, and this ordinance would codify in two ways for Boston residents to participate in the legislative process. One, any resident can submit a petition, which the council may act on at its discretion, or two, a petition signed by 500-plus residents must be given a hearing within three months. Petitions must be something that could be passed or ordered by the city council, but those petitions exclude matters affecting council operations and organization, emergency measures, loan orders and appropriations, personnel, elections and appointments, referenda, and initiative petitions. And the council need not address a petition if there is a substantially similar proceeding within a previous calendar year. And the clerk was there. She added tremendous value to that hearing, highlighting a lot of our procedures and policies regarding submission and acceptance of those petitions. Along with hearing from our city clerk, we also heard from Election Department Commissioner Dion Irish and Head Assistant Register Sabino Pimonte. So the discussion ran the gamut to include comparisons of city sizes, census data, feasibility of implementation timelines, when petitions would be heard, verification of residency. There's been discussion about increasing signature requires. There was a discussion about maybe potentially decreasing. And we heard from the members of the public. So as a result of the concerns and issues that were brought up, I expect to hold a working session, working with the Chair in the near future. So I'm requesting at this time that the matter stay in committee and await the date of a working session, but through the Chair would like to turn it over to Lead Sponsor, Counsel Michelle Wu, for any further comments that she has. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to thank the committee chair for making sure we got the hearing in. I know it's getting to be a really busy time before budget, so I'm very grateful. I want to thank also so many colleagues who took part and gave really great ideas. Just a quick recap for those who may not be familiar, this is a, well-described by Counsel Flaherty, way to let the public, through grassroots engagement, directly shape the council's agenda. We know from research that anyone who signs a petition is more likely to not only register to vote after that, but to actually vote in the next election. And nine cities across Massachusetts already have this in place at the city level, including Lawrence, Newton, Chelsea, and Winthrop. So I heard some skepticism from folks at the hearing, particularly around signature validation, who will be eligible, how does that match with the Elections Department's work during important times of the year, you know, particularly around signature collection for candidates and elections. I see a viable, workable path, so I'm going to be working with the Chair and everyone else to get us there. I want to thank Counsel Edwards for a suggestion for a filing deadline or some sort of period. And I think that idea in particular, along with Counsel President's ideas around how do we parcel out this work, what committees would it fit into, or is it a separate committee? I think these are all great tweaks that could make for a really viable way to continue enhancing the council's partnership with community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Counsel Wu. At this time, docket 0174 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0382, order for hearing regarding the proposed 13-hospital merger of Keir Group Inc., parent company of Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center and Leahy Health System.
Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This matter was sponsored by our colleague, City Council Tim McCarthy and City Council Ed Flynn. And the hearing sought to bring together all the stakeholders of the impacted groups of this proposed merger. If approved, the merger would result in creating another powerful hospital market on par with Partners Healthcare and also some increased market leverage. We held the hearing yesterday extremely informative, although a disclosure that we have no legislative oversight on the merger and thus no formal vote will be taking place here on the city council. But nonetheless, as elected representatives and also a lot of our constituents that take advantage of the great medical services that we have now at Beth Israel Deaconess, but this is a 13-hospital merger of Keir Group Inc. So it's a very significant situation here that a lot of folks expressed concerns and anxiety about. So to our knowledge, there's no official deadline as to when the merger could get approved. I know the Attorney General's Office is in a figure part of that. They observed the entire process from start to finish, and there are ongoing discussions with the State Health Policy Commission as well. So while it's ongoing, I'm recommending that we keep the matter in committee if further action is needed. But at this time, through the Chair, would like to turn it over to the two lead sponsors, Counsel McCarthy and Counsel Flynn, for further comments.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel McCarthy of the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I quickly want to thank Counsel Flaherty for chairing the hearing, and of course, my co-sponsor in this matter, Counsel Flynn. Simply put, this was an educational and informational hearing. We learned from both sides of the merger, the positives and the possible negatives. I urge my colleagues, if you couldn't make the hearing, a lot of you were there, review the tape. If you have a question to call up to the AG, as Counsel Flaherty so eloquently put, we have no jurisdiction here, but it was great to hear exactly what's going on. There were rumors that it could possibly hurt our local health centers, as well as our constituents who are most in need, and that's what we wanted to talk about at the hearing, and we did. So I urge you to take a peek at that if you weren't there, and go forth as you will. So I urge you to take a peek at that if you weren't there, and go forth as you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty, and thank you, Counsel McCarthy. It was a robust hearing, and thank you to all the counselors who attended. We discussed the potential merger of BI, Beth Israel, and Leahy Health Center, and how it would impact healthcare across our city. It was a hearing to learn from the experts in this field. It was informative, it was productive as well. What I learned from the hearing is, when there are mergers like this, we have to remember it's about the patients, it's about their healthcare, it's about people without access to healthcare, it's about our elderly, the disabled, communities of color, making sure healthcare is a right, and everybody's entitled to healthcare. And so I just want to say thank you to all the counselors for being there, thank you to Counsel Flaherty, thank you to Counsel McCarthy as well.
Thank you very much, Counsel Flynn. Docket 0382 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0290, order for hearing regarding the opportunities and challenges facing small businesses in the city of Boston.
Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So last night, I held a hearing on Docket 0290 to examine the opportunities and challenges facing small businesses in the city of Boston. I purposefully held the hearing in the evening and in a neighborhood commercial district because I really wanted to accommodate the schedules of business owners in the area who can always make their way downtown during the day. I'm very grateful to all of my colleagues for their interest and support on the issue of small business, and I wanted to offer special thanks to Counselors Flaherty, Wu, and Edwards for attending the hearing. I know there were many others who expressed interest in attending, but our evening schedules are very busy, and we have a lot of competition for our evenings, so I appreciate those who offered well wishes, even if they could not be there. I also want to say thank you to central staff. I know it's not easy holding a meeting off-site. They certainly make it look easy, and I really appreciate their flexibility. So the hearing lasted close to three hours. We had three panels, including representation from Inspection Services, and people from the Chief Barrister's office, including the Director of Boston Main Streets, and representation from the Office of Small Business Development. We also heard from banks and accelerators who connect businesses with funding and technical support. We had directors from four different local main streets, and of course, we had a panel of entrepreneurs and heard public testimony. So as Chair and as sponsor, I really wanted to hold the hearing in the evening and off-site, as I mentioned earlier, just so that more folks could come. And I was intentional about the location of the bowling building in Dudley Square because of the history of that building. It's the old Ferdinand Building, for those who don't know. It was a furniture store, and was really a staple in that community in the heyday when Dudley was the second-largest commercial district in the city of Boston. For a long time, the site sat vacant. There were promises. Finally, those promises were fulfilled, and there was hope that the new building, the bowling building, would really kind of inject some new light and revitalize the area, but as we found last night, and for many of us who frequent that area, there's still so much more work that needs to be done. The overarching theme from the hearing was on equity, and how the city can really support entrepreneurs who have historically been locked out of opportunity, especially people of color, women, and those from immigrant communities. We also heard the importance of being intentional on what and how we measure success, and that we monitor it closely. So we heard several challenges that small business owners face, including access to capital or lack thereof, especially for startups, the need for technical assistance, rising rents and displacement, lack of parking for business owners and patrons alike, the need for support and technical assistance from the city, permitting from the city, what it costs in terms of time and money, the lack of liquor licenses, lease agreements, and how we can be creative to help small business, vacant lots, blight, trash pickup, litter lording, and the lack of signage, the high cost of doing business in the city of Boston. Some business owners expressed barriers in terms of not being able to get support because of language barriers, and so making sure that we are much more inclusive in who we hire to support folks, barriers in terms of high costs of operating food trucks, the need for collective vision, and then finally, just foot traffic, and making sure that we have the population and density to support business. In addition to the challenges, there were many promising ideas and opportunities that were presented, including, again, the piece around measuring and monitoring using the equity lens, having a clear checklist in terms of the permitting needs, affordable commercial space, and being innovative around lease agreements, and the list goes on. So I guess the final thing that I would say is that this was the first of many on this topic. In preparation for the hearing, I did lots of business tours in the area to really speak with business owners, to hear what their needs are. I think we certainly need to continue that conversation. I appreciate all the work from my colleagues on this issue in the past, and their work in partnership with me moving forward, and I really just want to say thank you to all of the small business owners who make our neighborhoods great, certainly all those who attended the hearing last night. There's so much more work that needs to be done, and so I recommend that this stay in committee for future hearings or and/or working sessions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Janey. Docket 0290 will remain in the Committee on Small Business and Consumer Affairs. Motions, orders, and resolutions?
Docket number 0590, Counselor Asabi George offered the following resolution, supporting an alcohol advertisement-free Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority, known as MBTA.
Counsel Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I first want to recognize that April is Alcohol Awareness Month, so this resolution is not only necessary but timely. Alcohol is the most commonly used addictive substance in the United States. 15.1 million people over the age of 18 have had a diagnosis of alcohol use disorder, which is the third-leading lifestyle cause of death in the United States. According to the Journal of Studies on Alcohol, banning alcohol advertisement would result in 7,609 fewer deaths. Although many believe it is imperative, although many believe it, we still have a lot of work to do to make sure that youth exposure to alcohol advertising is eliminated. Unfortunately, the MBTA's Fiscal Management and Control Board recently voted to reverse the ban on alcohol advertising. All of us as city counselors, myself as Chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, work every day towards finding more resources and services to help those experiencing homelessness, mental health issues, and seeking a life of recovery. While advocating for more efficient funds, and more funds and more efficiency in the work that we do, we also want to look for ways to prevent issues that our residents face, and we continue to work as a city on these issues. The banning of alcohol advertisements on the MBTA would be immensely effective and diminish positive, it helped diminish positive attitudes and perceptions about alcohol use in youth, reduce youth drinking, and curtail the number of youth who become addicted to alcohol. I'd like to thank the Alston Brighton Substance Abuse Task Force for advocating for this resolution, and I appreciate all of you for your support in this resolution for an alcohol-free advertising, alcohol advertisement-free MBTA. I'm happy to offer this resolution and look forward to creating additional and more healthy choices in advertisement of healthy lifestyles for all of the youth in Boston and in Massachusetts. You'll note, I'm sorry for, I should have said this first, there is an updated, just a single typo, in the resolution that was in your packet being replaced with the one on your desk. Thank you.
Suspension of the rules? Suspension?
I would appreciate suspension of the rules and adoption of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. At this, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
At this time, anyone wishing to add their name to this resolution? Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Janey, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Presley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair. At this time, Counsel Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket 0590. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0590 has been adopted.
Docket number 0591, Counsel Presley offered the following order for hearing to discuss and assess the amount and quality of tree coverage in the city of Boston.
Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I just wanted to add my good friend and colleague, District Six City Council Matt O'Malley, the Chair of the Committee on Environment, to this docket. We're already partnering on the issue of curbside composting, so I'm delighted to have his partnership in this effort as well. I view every issue in the city through a lens of health and equity, and in thinking about certainly the ways we as a body and as a city have been improved towards when it comes to practicing sustainability, and thinking about resilience and mitigation measures, I don't want us to lose sight of this natural resource, which are our trees. You know, while the city is in the midst of this unprecedented building boom, we are well aware that we are losing green space, and so in future developments, we continue to have those debates about how do we preserve existing green space and how do we grow it? But trees need to be a part, and must be a part of this equation, especially mature trees. Because of the development that we are experiencing, and because of climate change, so either because of drought or because of development, we are losing trees. And these trees are critical to the ecological and overall health of our communities. Just some of the things for folks who might not be aware, and considering the role that trees do play, especially mature trees, reducing stormwater runoff by intercepting rainwater in their canopies. In some instances, when you have trees close to development, they increase property values, in some cases up to 20%. Again, in terms of the health benefits, reducing rates of asthma and other respiratory elements. Certainly, we know that trees, like all green space, have been proven to reduce anxiety, depression, and even to lower crime, when you have a more landscaped environment. And so the reason why I wanted to put this hearing order forward is so that we could be intentional and thoughtful, as we are looking for tools around resilience and mitigation, that we assess, that we do a mapping of where are our trees, where are our mature trees, and that we consider in terms of future planning where we need to plant, and should we consider, especially when we're looking at East Boston, I know there's a tree planting, you know, brigade and effort there, but for neighborhoods like East Boston and the Seaport that are more vulnerable, do we need to look at a greater density of planting of trees in those neighborhoods? So again, ultimately, the issue just boils down to one of health and equity, and I think we should be ensuring that every neighborhood has an equity and opportunity to build up their resilience, and I don't want us to lose sight of trees as a part of this. You know, in other cities, they have formed task force in order to keep the city and residents accountable, specifically where this is concerned. I don't know that we're there yet, but I look forward to hearing, you know, from the city and all relevant departments and agencies to better understand the state of our mature trees in the city of Boston. And again, I thank Counsel O'Malley for his partnership.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm tremendously grateful to work with my dear colleague and friend, the at-large counsel from Dorchester, on this incredibly important issue, and it dovetails nicely with work that this body did and relates to our Gas Leaks Bill a couple of years ago, which sought to clarify and classify trees as real property that are being destroyed to the tunes of, you know, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars. The fact of the matter is, is that Boston has a well-earned reputation of being a relatively green city as it relates to tree coverage and canopy, and that's something we're very proud of. We do have more parks and playgrounds and better coverage than most similar-sized urban cities, but the fact of the matter is, we don't have any clear understanding of just how many trees and what the canopy is, what the canopy coverage is. There was a study done in 2004, which pegged that number at about 28% canopy coverage, which is remarkable if that was the case. I would submit to you that that is a bit too rosy a statistic than what other independent audits have shown, including one at MIT, which is called the Sensible City Lab, that studied 10 global cities, called itself Treepedia, and used information from Google Street View to create a green view index. And in that, Boston was actually 18.2%. Again, a pretty good sort of average number. Amsterdam was slightly higher, 20%, Frankfurt higher, 21.5%, Durbin 23%, Cape Town was lower, 13%, Cambridge across the river was higher, 25%, Geneva 21%, Johannesburg 23%, et cetera, et cetera, London 12%. So we're sort of middle of the pack, and we have an opportunity to be a lot better. And in the midst of this building boom, as Counsel Presley very eloquently noted, you know, we are seeing mature trees that are being removed and not being replaced. Sometimes they are, so I know all of my district colleagues, particularly whenever we have a new development, that's always an ask that we make, but it's not coming up, and it takes obviously decades for a young tree to sort of be able to reap the benefits that a mature tree could offer. Mature trees provide health and environmental benefits, they reduce stormwater runoff, they absorb carbon emissions, they reduce asthma to residents, they provide shade, which then decreases cost to residents, and they increase property values. The benefits are immeasurable, and there's a real opportunity as for not only see exactly what we have, but come up with pathways that we can increase that. This is a really exciting, innovative order. This is something that, if we do this right, it will benefit the city for centuries to come. So I will thank again my dear colleague for her leadership in this and great partnership, and I will close by paraphrasing one of my favorite poets of all time, Joyce Kilmer, who in this case would say, "Legislation is made by fools like we, but only God can make a tree." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Please add my name. You know, I happen to subscribe to, if a tree comes down, the two should go up in its place, and I'm not a tree hugger by any stretch of the imagination. And I'll just comment maybe just more on the mature tree and understanding its historical significance and its added value in some instances, but we've all received those phone calls. A lot of the mature trees do create problems, penetrating foundations, undermining people's homes, creating public safety hazards, particularly the way they uproot the sidewalks, particularly our seniors and those with limited mobility, so they do cause their fair share of problems. I want through the Chair and through the Maker, if we could add the Parks Department, but specifically, the city's arborist, because it's a mystery to me to try to get tree pruning, to try to get trees planted, to deal with mature tree issues. It's, yeah, I guess sometimes it becomes more than a mystery. So having the city's arborist to come in and kind of describe, what's the policy, what's the criteria, and making sure that there's some uniformity there, but totally subscribe to, again, we need to be planting more trees in the city, and when a tree does come down, I'd love to see two come back up in its place, but, you know, we do have our fair share of issues, but having the appropriate parties there, if we could just include through the Chair to the Maker, the Parks Department, but be very specific, and we want the city's arborist in or arborist, I don't even know how many we have. We don't have enough, I can tell you that much, but I know that we've all struggled with this issue around, you know, tree pruning, tree planting, and mature trees causing issues, and it's kind of like, it's like a Three Stooges, you just got to call over there, and you kind of get the, you know, the whoop-a-whoop, and it's like, we just need an answer, we need the tree pruned, or this tree is now penetrating someone's basement or undermining their home, what's the issue, how do we address it? And then I know that when you start to address it, people come out of the woodwork, not wanting to touch the tree. So it's a, I'd love to have sort of a clearly defined rule of the road, if you will, from the city's arborist as we address this very important, critical issue that I add my name to. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Madam Clerk, in addition, can you add Counsel Flaherty's name, and then to the Maker, as Maker is Counsel Presley and O'Malley, just noting adding city arborist to the hearing order, which I'm sure you'd be happy to do. So thank you both. At this time, Madam Clerk, in addition to adding Counsel Flaherty, can we also add Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Janey, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 0... Docket 0591 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment, Sustainability, and Parks.
Docket number 0592, Counselor Asabi George offered the following resolution, supporting the efforts of charter school educators and staff to exercise their right to collective bargaining and the formation of unions.
Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to first start off by thanking all of the teachers through the Commonwealth and certainly of Boston, whether public, religious, charter or private, or for that matter, homeschool, for all of their work and for what they do to ensure that our children receive the best education and experience in our schools. Earlier this year, two teachers from City on a Hill Charter School made the decision to join the Boston Teachers Union. In doing so, the number of charter school teachers joining the BTU has increased. All teachers have a right to form a union, to discuss what's best for their students and their schools, to advocate for themselves, and to create a network of their own, as well as to advocate for safe and productive work environments. A union gives teachers the agency necessary to take a leadership role, ensure teacher retention, fight for better pay, and have a transparent budget process. I hope that all my colleagues will join me in supporting this effort. I'd like to thank the Boston Teachers Union for their work on this issue and for welcoming our state's charter school teachers into their union. I ask of this council and request suspension and adoption of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Counselor Asabi George for bringing this forward. I asked that my name be added and really just echo her comments that I think it is incredibly important, whether we're talking about our teachers, our educators, whether we're talking about workers in the private sector or other city departments. The right to organize, to collectively bargain is incredibly important, both on workplace conditions and how people are treated in the workplace, but also when we're talking about addressing issues of inequality and access that are happening across the country now. I think it's incredibly important that we support these efforts. This body has a great record of supporting efforts for folks in the private sector, in the public sector. And I'm excited to see that organizing efforts are taking place now and being successful in our charter schools. So I ask that my name be added. I'm looking forward to enthusiastically supporting this resolution.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to also commend the Maker, my good friend, the other at-large counsel from Dorchester, and ask that my name be added as well. I would, obviously, some of my criticism as it relates to charter schools stems from the fact that many of the teachers don't have the same option to collectively bargain and organize. So I think this is a step in the right direction. I do think it bears noting that all of us began the day at Mayor Walsh's breakfast, and he underscored the fact that the funding reimbursement for charters for urban districts is so deeply flawed that we are on the precipice of essentially having to pay more. We're losing money continuously. So I do think that that should be part of this conversation as well as it relates to, you know, obviously it'd be great for the teachers to unionize, but that underscores the importance that we need to work with our state delegation to fix that, because it's only going to exacerbate the problem as we've seen the last several budget cycles. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to echo what has already been said. First, to commend the Maker. Thank you so much for bringing this forward. The ability to organize, fight for children, obviously, fight for working conditions is so very important. I think this could help in ensuring that we see less turnover in some of our charter schools, and certainly around pay. And so we know that there are huge disparities in terms of what Boston public school teachers make when they are a part of a union, and that many other teachers in these other places don't make that. And so I look forward to the conversation, and again, say thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Janey, would you like to add your name?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Janey, Counselor Zachem, Counselor O'Malley, as well as Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Presley, Counselor Wu, as well as the Chair. At this time, Counselor Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0592. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0592 has been adopted. Personnel orders?
Docket number 0593, Counselor Campbell for Counselor Siomo.
Counselor Siomo seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0593. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0593 has been passed.
Docket number 0594, Counselor Campbell for Counselor Siomo.
Counselor Siomo seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0594. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0594 has been passed. At this time, I am informed by the clerk that we have three late file matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing and seeing no objections, the three late file matters are added to the agenda. Madam Clerk, if you could read the first late file matter?
In City Council, Counselor Campbell, April 9, 2018, ordered that effective Saturday, March 31, 2018, the following persons.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor, well, to name myself, really. The Chair at this time moves for suspension of the rules and passage of the first late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The first late file matter has been passed. Madam Clerk, if you could read the second late file matter?
Thank you, Madam President. In City Council, order of Council Lydia Edwards, Housing and Real Estate Issues in the Metropolitan Boston Area, be it ordered that the Boston City Council's Committee on Housing and Community Development hold meetings and engage in conversations regarding housing and real estate issues facing the Metropolitan Boston area, together with local officials and other relevant parties from the Boston, Cambridge, Chelsea, and Somerville, filed in City Council, April 11, 2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The second late file matter, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. The second late file matter will be assigned to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Madam Clerk, if you could read the third late file matter?
Should I read first and last?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Offered by Counselor Michael F. Flaherty and Counselor Ed Flynn, resolution in support of House Budget Amendment regarding concurrent police authority for Massachusetts Port Authority properties filed by Representative Nick Collins. Whereas, per state statute, the Boston Police Department does not have concurrent police jurisdiction on Massport properties, which covers much of the South Boston waterfront, sections of East Boston, and other areas of the city. Therefore, be it resolved that the Boston City Council go on record in support of House Budget Amendment regarding concurrent police authority for Massachusetts Port Authority properties to ensure equal police services are made available to all areas of Boston, filed in Council, April 11, 2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, apologies for the late file. Just trying to strike Wylie Irons' heart in a sense that this is an ongoing issue, started back when my former colleague and Counsel Feeney's former colleague, Jim Kelly, might have been, actually, Siomo might have been around for that one too, but started this years ago as the South Boston waterfront started to increase development activity. We also see it now over in East Boston as well. So alongside the city's budget, the state houses, their budgets also underway, and our colleagues, State Representative Nick Collins, has filed an amendment regarding concurrent police jurisdiction on Massport properties excluding Logan International Airport and Massport properties that are dedicated solely for aviation operation. And also from the onset, let me just commend the men and women of the State Police Department, particularly those that patrol in Boston, both Troop F, which is Logan, and all Massport properties, as well as Troop H, which is the Old Colony Barracks, State House, and the Lower Basin, under the leadership of both Major Frank McGinn and Major Ricky Ball. They do phenomenal work. We know them. They do our roads. They're doing our parks. They're doing our beaches. And we interact with them regularly. What we're looking for is concurrent jurisdiction, very much like what we have with the MBTA on Massport properties and around the South Boston waterfront and over in East Boston. For example, Pierce Park in East Boston and, you know, the waterfront areas down off of Northern Avenue. So we were close to an agreement. They actually had a memorandum of understanding during Flaherty round one that was close to being done. And at the 11th hour then, former Mayor Tom Manino pulled Commissioner Davis back from the table in an effort to try to iron out a few other issues, and they never got back to the table. Our Commissioner, Commissioner Evans, has been working really hard, you know, with our mayor, and obviously discussions ongoing with the governor and the new Colonel to try to resolve this issue once and for all. Boston police and residents, taxpayers, businesses, visitors deserve, when they call 911, to have the benefit of both either the state police, if they happen to be there and on site, or the Boston Police Department responding to those calls. So on behalf of both Counsel Flynn and I, we're presenting a resolution to support the efforts of State Representative Nick Collins, which will add language that would give state police sole responsibility and authority over the airport, over all of Logan International Airport, as well as all of the airport operation, but would give the Boston Police Department concurrent police jurisdiction on all of their other local properties that are in the city of Boston. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Counselor Flaherty, for your leadership on this. And we also wanted to say thank you to the mayor and Police Commissioner Evans and Representative Nick Collins as well. As Michael Flaherty mentioned, we have the greatest respect and admiration for the state police and for the Massport police departments. As the District City Council of representing this neighborhood, I have heard from neighbors in their need for a stronger police presence in the waterfront. So much development that is going on, many bars, restaurants, licenses, and when a public safety issue arises, we do need our Boston police on scene. Residents of the Seaport, the South Boston waterfront, they pay taxes, they work hard, and are part of our community, in our city. And I respectfully ask the City Council, consider this matter, and to make sure that our residents in the waterfront area receive the same protection as any part of the neighborhood across the city. Thank you. Move for the suspension and adoption?
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Before suspension and adoption, I've just had a couple comments in support of my colleague's wonderful resolution of what I think is an ongoing conversation we've had many times in East Boston with regards to Pierce Park, but also there's property in Charleston. A good chunk of Charleston is owned by Massport, where they have leases on the land there. And what we've often found is that there is a tug of war. When a person needs help, they really don't care who responds. But if, due to the jurisdictional, you know, footballing of how they're going to respond, we end up with a person waiting longer than they need to for help, that's something that we all are impacted by. I could speak directly to having to share resources of the Massport, specifically the ambulance in East Boston, and how in East Boston, we had eight-minute wait times for our ambulance, is the longest in the city, because we shared it with Massport. Again, not to say anything about the folks who are hardworking, first responders, police officers, doing their job, but it was due to the jurisdictional tug of war that we ended up having to share this resource. Thank goodness, the city of Boston rose to the occasion. We now have an increase in hours and are getting at least a temporary fix and ultimately a permanent fix by getting a second ambulance. So in this fix, we also need to think as a city of Boston how we're going to support that joint jurisdiction. I know today, it's worth noting in the budget, that we're getting 30 new recruits in our police office, and I think we're graduating 20 new cadets. In any event, we're going to have to figure out how that personnel is also going to be part of or working with Massport. I know we can rise to that occasion. So I support the makers. Thank you very much for this and supporting our colleague at the State House Senator?
Soon to be.
State Representative Nick Collins. Sorry. Representative Nick Collins and his also, his leadership. Yes, I'd like to add my name. Please.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Edward's name. And at this time, Counsel Flaherty?
Just one comment. Counsel Edward said, just to underscore, it can be as trivial as sort of like just bickering, or it could be a situation where there was a gentleman that was shot right across the street from my house, and as he was laying on the ground and the EMTs were performing lifesaving measures, there literally was a full-scale argument between the Boston Police and the state police over jurisdiction. Adults, right? Grown men and women arguing over who got the call, who got there first, where the call came from. So it goes from sort of the trivial as the, you know, outside of maybe Northern Avenue and who should be patrolling out front of, say, Del Frisco's, to life safety measures and/or a domestic caller that came in where there was a response that took over 18 minutes for somebody to get to because there was the posturing. So it's a significant and serious enough issue. It's been going on for too long. Our hope is that, you know, we can suspend and adopt. It goes up there. State Representative Nick Collins, hopefully soon to be Senator Nick Collins, will have the opportunity through his collective resources up there to get this thing passed. I know that the mayor and governor are engaged in discussion. So with our commissioner and their Colonel, it just makes sense. It's reasonable. It's practical. And let's put the juvenile behavior behind, and let's put what's in the best interest of the residents and taxpayers. And what that is, is concurrent jurisdiction. 911 calls come in on assaults and domestics. Those go the regular route like everything else. And as far as the roads and the details and that stuff, they can have them, as far as I'm concerned, state police and Massport police, which they do a great job. That's their niche. That's what they do. They don't want to try to invade that turf. We just want those 911 calls. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Madam Clerk, in addition to adding Counsel Edward's name, can you also add Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Janey, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Presley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair? I too want to thank the makers for this and Commissioner Evans for his hard work. This has been a discussion for some time. So thank you again. At this time, Counselors Flaherty and Flynn seek suspension of the rules and adoption of the third late file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The third late file matter has been passed. I just have to take a quick recess. To remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to pull docket number 0134 from page four of seven.
In the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, docket number 0134, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $1,800,000 in the form of the Title III C Nutrition Program for FFY 2018, awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed to the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Elderly Commission. This grant will fund home-delivered and congregate mails to seniors in Boston. It was referred to committee on January 24, 2018.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you pull the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities to bring the docket before the council?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Counselor Presley?
Yes.
Counselor Presley, yes. Counselor Asabi George?
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counsel O'Malley?
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Wu?
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem?
Yes.
Counsel Zachem, yes. There is a unanimous vote of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities on docket number 0134.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0134 is now properly before the council. Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Madam Clerk. I had hoped to be able to hold a hearing on this grant as an opportunity to highlight the amazing work of our Elderly Commission. But ran out of time. The clock is ticking here, and this grant is very important. Again, it's very consistent with the grant that we previously approved as a council earlier in this meeting. The Commission on Affairs of the Elderly through state and federal funds, received through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs, again, delivers social, ombudsman, health prevention, caregiver, and nutrition services to Boston seniors. The Nutrition Services Program, which involves nutrition services- Nutrition Services Program, which involves Nutrition Services Incentive Program and the State Elder Lunch. Bear with me, guys, a lot of acronyms here. Again, serves about 470,000 traditional and ethnic meals to approximately 1,200 Boston seniors residing in three regions through these vendors, who we all work closely with. Ethos, the Greater Boston Chinese Golden Age, and Kit Clark Senior Services, at their homes or at 47 congregate meal sites. In addition to serving meals, Nutrition Program also provides nutrition, education, assessment, wellness check, and counseling. In FY 2018, the Commission received a total of $3.4 million, including $1.7 million for Title III C, $1.3 million for State Elder Lunch, and $0.4 million for the Nutrition Services Incentive Program. And again, I move to suspend and pass.
Thank you, Council Presley. At this time, Council Presley moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0134. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0134 has been passed. Council Siomo, you have the floor.
I rise to pull 0444 from page two, under assigned for further action, with further detail on page eight of eight. The committee held its hearing on, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. In the Committee on Ways and Means, docket number 04444, sponsored by the mayor. Message and order approving an appropriation of $9,486,511 for the purpose of paying the cost associated with boiler and roof repairs at the following schools: East Boston High School, Sumner School K-5, O'Donnell School K-5, Russell School K-5, and Tobin School K-8. This includes the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the city of Boston may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, known as MSBA, set amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools, was referred to committee on March 21, and a hearing was held on March 27.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you. We had our first vote on March 28. These projects are part of the MSBA program, and the funds will be expended under the Public Facilities Department on behalf of the Boston Public Schools. Construction will take place during the summer and will not affect the start dates of the school year. The MSBA reimbursement to the city will be approximately 65.5% of the total cost of, was it $9 million and change? I don't have it here, I'm sorry. These repairs will not only materially extend the useful life of the schools and preserve BPS assets, but provide a comfortable and pleasant environment, more conducive to learning for the students, and also provide energy-efficient and cost-saving upgrades, which will result in direct operational savings for the school district. I recommend our second vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Siomo. Council Siomo, Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, at this time, requests a second vote on docket 0444. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Thank you. Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Campbell?
Yes.
Council Campbell, yes. Council Siomo?
Yes.
Council Siomo, yes. Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Edwards, yes. Council Sabi George?
Yes.
Council Sabi George, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes.
Yes.
Council Janey?
Yes.
Council Janey, yes. Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council O'Malley?
Yes.
Council Presley?
Yes.
Council Wu?
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. And Council Zakey?
Yes.
Council Zakey, yes. Madam President, docket number 0444 has received a 12 to 0 vote in its second reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0444 has been passed. At this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I am informed by the clerk that we have just one late-file matter, which in the absence of objection will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objections, the late-file matter is added. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda at this time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda has been adopted. At this time, I recognize, Council O'Malley, for what purpose do you rise?
I ask unanimous consent to make a brief statement.
Regarding?
Regarding reflections.
Say again?
Another poll.
Go ahead, Council O'Malley.
This upcoming Monday will be my favorite day in the city. It's Patriots' Day, it's the 122nd running of the Boston Marathon. 25,000 athletes from around the world will begin in Hopkinton, run through Ashland, Framingham, Natick, Wellesley, Newton, Brookline, Boston, start in District Nine, then District Eight, where they'll take the right on Hereford, left on Boylston Street, cross that finish line. It is one of the most remarkable events in the world, running events in the world, and the feeling that each athlete will receive when he or she crosses that finish line is immeasurable. It's also the fifth-year anniversary since the devastating bombings at the marathon back in 2013. It's amazing to think, I had to double-check my math, and indeed, it was five years ago. One of the darkest days in the city's history, one of the most challenging. It also underscored our drive, our resolve, our tenacity. But just ask, and I know all of you do this, as we close the meeting today and over the next couple of days, let's remember what that day meant, not only the strength that the city showed, but 264 individuals who were injured, those who don't have scars you can see but have deeper, as deep injuries, the 16 individuals who lost limbs, and of course, Crystal Campbell, Lingzi Lu, Martin Richard on the Marathon Day, Officer Sean Collier a couple of years later in the manhunt, and Officer Dennis Simmons, who died a year later from injuries that he had sustained to the Boston Police Officer in the shootout in Watertown. So just ask that you could add them to closing in memory of and keep all their wonderful lives and legacies in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council O'Malley. Council Sabi George, for what purpose do you rise?
Thank you, Madam President. I rise just to recognize someone who has been critical to passing and the work to pass the alcohol-free MBTA piece. I just, she wasn't able to join us.
No problem, go ahead.
Is it okay?
Yes, of course it is. Go ahead, Council Sabi George.
I would just like to recognize Helen Conley, who's here from the Alston Brighten Substance Use Task Force, and her work since I joined the council in supporting me and learning about recovery opportunities and programs in the city, but just her constant effort citywide in this effort is just something that I want to make sure that she gets recognized. I gave her the good news that we supported that resolution to support the work to ban alcohol ads from MBTA, but I just want to recognize Helen because she was here.
Thank you, Council Sabi George, and thank you all for your work. At this time, I ask all guests and my colleagues to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. And we will start with those, not only those who suffered physical injuries during the marathon five years ago, but those who have suffered injuries that weren't physical but also continue to. So thank you, Council O'Malley, for bringing that forward. In addition, we recognize the following. For Council Baker, Ralph Whittmore. For Councilors Baker, Flaherty, and Flynn, Lorraine Marancy. For Council O'Malley, Myron Polina, James Shumansky, James Sewell III. For Council Zakey, Sam Schlong. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. At this time, the Chair moves for adjournment. The Chair moves that the council adjourn today in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and that we are scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, April 25, at noon in this chamber. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The council is adjourned.